Nate, we will give her it's one o'clock. Let's give her thirty more seconds.
There.
Afternoon, Counselor.
How are you?
We went. Remember to use your mics. Or yells. Sir yells. We're gonna call the committee. Pardon? We're gonna call the committee, the whole meeting to order. At one o'clock on April twelve, twenty twenty-three, we respectfully acknowledge that the land on which we gather exceeded traditional territory of the First Nation. So approval of the agenda. It's recommended that the committee of the whole meeting agenda for April twelfth, twenty twenty-three be approved as circulated. And it's Counselor Evans, Counselor Bushell, any comments? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Adoption of minutes, recommendations of the minutes of the committee of whole meeting held on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Go on, as Counselor Ridge, Counselor Bushell, any question? All good? All in favor? Carrie. Okay, business arising. Wiseman Creek update. Derek Sutherland, Detective Services Team Leader, Shuswap Emergency Program. Derek, take it away.
Your worship, members of council, I appreciate you having me today and what we're gonna try and do today is is update the council on what happened on my main create drainage. Subject to some of the brief flow issues that are threatening the Sycamore Street Mobile Home Park and we're pointing to our second year of debris flow activity and the potential for harm to to life and property there. So there we go. Thank you. So I just wanna recap on some of the things that the Shuswap Emergency Program has has done to kind of respond to this hazard and and touch on why we have a hazard here. So Wiseman Creek is the creek that flows directly through the Sycamore Street Mobile Home Park and in October of twenty twenty-one, after the two-mile road fire, we had engineers that we worked with, BGC Engineering, in the area. I mean, it's from Ridge Basin Council that were involved, but they called us up and they were quite concerned about what they were seeing the hydrophobic soil after the fire in the Wiseman Creek Drainage. They noted that the Wiseman Creek Drainage is not a drainage that's subject to to debris flow activity generally, unless we're in a post-wildfire situation where we have these hydrophobic slopes showing up. So they recommended that an assessment be done and we applied for some funding, NBC, and did that assessment. Of course, the findings suggested that we are at high risk of debris flow to the point where our engineers had told us that there's a hundred percent chance of debris flow within the next two years in that creek drainage. So we took that very, very seriously and we developed a response plan that you see in front of you today. And then we started lobbying, NBC at the time, EMCR now, and for finding to do some mitigations and help us with the response in this area. So we conducted a number of studies, post-wildfire debris flow being the most significant study. And we applied for NBC funding to do that and and then one of the most probably the most important things we did was that we started building capacity within the community to respond to this this hazard event. And then we started leveraging some of our partnerships that were important to helping us deal with this. And and then, of course, we ended with a full communications plan. One of the things that we hear most often after a disaster is that the communications were lacking and and in all things within the Shuswap Emergency Program, we try and and make it so that's never something somebody can complain about. There's maybe some misses here and there, but we try and be really comprehensive with our communications and I think we have been in this too. All right, so this still isn't working.
No.
But it should work now. Sometimes if I'm not, go back and forth. That's fine.
Good. Got me?
Yeah.
All right. So anyways, we did our post-wildfire debris flow assessment as our first kind of study of the area. That was the document that the engineers did and told us what kind of hazard we were facing and what the likelihood was. Obviously, it was fire. And then we we went back to the NBC and got more funding to do a mitigative options study. And essentially, they came back with a bunch of different options, some engineered solutions, some risk avoidance solutions and and the early warning system strategy to to get people out early. So the engineered interventions just, there was a number of them presented, but none of them were viable due to the fact that they were high cost and they would have been slow to get going. So our risk window with this slide is two to three years and we're in year two of it. We didn't have enough time to be building big firms and doing big engineering projects. Plus, these projects were unfunded at the time. So there were grants that we could have been chasing after, but we didn't have the time to go through the approval processes for those grants. And the the structures would have been essentially useless after that two or three-year window. So we were looking at spending, you know, three, four, five million dollars on engineered structures that wouldn't have been built in time and would be obsolete very quickly after being built. So we looked at risk avoidance strategies like moving the the homes in the Sycamore Street Mobile Home Park and we we received funding from NBC again to conduct a study. We engaged urban systems to help us with that study and urban systems came back with the same sort of story that the cost would be incredibly high and there weren't any real viable options and the social implications for the residents of the Sycamore Street Mobile Home Park would have made it such that it wasn't feasible at all. So there was no situation where moving the mobile homes after we received that report from urban systems. So and then we hired the BBC and conduct another study after we learned that BCTS wanted to go in after the area of the two-mile road fire and salvage the reduce the salvage logging on the timber that burnt in that drainage. There are some studies out of the states that our engineers were aware of that were recommending against salvage logging in these drainages. And so we asked our engineer to to look at that and study that for us. And they determined that a salvage logging wasn't recommended. We'll get into that a little bit more if you want to advance this slide one more time. So, yeah, we're getting to that a little bit. Essentially, this is where we're at now. When I presented this slide to council last year, we had the first two approved and the second two were not approved. So, like I said, we we did get approval for the feasibility study that said it wasn't feasible. We've got mitigative options analysis and we got a post-wildfire assessment. Last year, we were really struggling with NBC to get them to approve this early warning system. And this is a system that's designed to use more active weather data to tell us when we're gonna get significant rain at all events that were exceeding the thresholds that were set by our engineers. And we entered fighting really, really hard with NBC to get them to fund this early warning system. And they didn't actually fund it in the end. We actually ended up getting funding from year-end budget out of ministry reports. And we got thirty-five thousand dollars from them to institute this early warning system last year. And it became our go-to strategy for mitigating the potential disaster in the to the residents in the Sycamore Street Mobile Home Park. Of course, it doesn't help with the loss of property, but it certainly gave us an opportunity to preserve life and save the residents in there while keeping them in their homes as long as we possibly could. So this year in the fall, after everything was said and done last year, we ended up having about four incidences of rainfall events in the Wiseman Creek watershed. We went back to the engineers, we had them retool some of their thresholds and they were using fairly conservative thresholds. And after we had those incidences and nothing happened, they were able to dial those thresholds up. And this year, we should be going into the next season with a better sense of what will cause these these debris flows. So it's unexact science and the tool learns over time. So this year, it's the second year, we're gonna have a better sense of where we're at. And if we were using this in perpetuity, it would just get better and better and better over time. So we'll advance the next slide. So, like I said before, one of the most significant interventions that we give is this community building. And we engage with the senior center as a reception center for any evacuated persons. We ended up putting in four evacuation alerts left and so but we didn't end up having to evacuate the mobile home park at all. But we were prepared to do so. So we have what we call our special teams personnel with ESS. We have a number of long-term volunteers with our ESS program that have been in that are live in Sycamore and been with the program a really long time. We met with them, we engaged with them and we let them know what the situation was, the gravity of the situation, what they needed to do to step up and help their fellow Sycamore residents. In this case, of course, they were really keen to support and to help. And then we ended up putting them with the residents of the Sycamore Street Mobile Home Park for them to get to know other friends and neighbors that they would be supporting. We set up a special supplier list in Sycamore to support, specifically support the needs of the residents of the Sycamore Street Mobile Home Park. And and then we established a neighborhood emergency program specific to the Mobile Home Park. So Lanny is our coordinator for that neighborhood emergency program. She's done a fabulous job helping us get the word out and spread the kind of the message of resiliency throughout the neighborhood. So it's been excellent. And and of course, we've had several meetings with the residents of the Sycamore Street Mobile Home Park and those residents that need electric support are finding it with their other neighbors who can give a little extra support, which is really really nice. And when you can build that kind of neighborhood capacity, sometimes it doesn't sound like much, but it can make the huge difference in responding to that. So don't mind advancing the slide again. We we spoke with Environment Canada and we let them know what our concerns were, let them know what we were doing, and they put us on a special distribution list to look at whether in Sycamore and when they were getting significant rain events to be aware that this debris flow may happen with the short-duration, high-intensity rain events. And so they're really well versed in this and keeping a surprise of the snow packed out as they always do. So we engaged with our local paramedics and let them know what we needed from them and they were also willing to help. You'll see the SPCA up there. In these emergency events, one of the big barriers to evacuation is what am I gonna do with my pets? And and people, you know, our pets are our family. And so we engage the SPCA early to make sure that there are plans for any pets that people didn't have a specific plan for or needed a little extra support with. And then, of course, we engage with the Hootsaw Bridge Rescue and the RCMP to let them know what we needed during evacuation, set them up with maps, did drills, and let them know exactly where everybody was and what the needs were. So and then we engage with BCTS over salvage logging and that one ended up not being as successful as we would have liked. Our few technical engineers told us that salvage logging in the Wiseman Creek area after their study was a really bad idea and BCTS had their own hydrogeologists go into the drainage and said, no, not only is it okay to salvage logs in here, but it will make the situation better in this area. They really wanted to clean up some of the old legacy trails that were in the area from historical logging from like the fifties and sixties. And so they were using this opportunity to get in there and do that and salvage some of the value that was left in the timber. And I think we can probably all agree that salvaging the value that's in burnt timber is is a really good economic idea. What we're really concerned with is doing it specifically in the Wiseman Creek Drainage is that it would exacerbate the issues in the drainage and cause more of a hazard situation or increase the risk. And our engineers agreed with that and presented. So they were at a bit of loggerhead because you have one really highly respected engineering firm saying, don't do this. And you had another highly respected engineering firm saying that it not only should we do this or is it okay to do this, we should do this. So BCTS ended up going ahead with their salvage logging operations. And you'll see in your resiliency plan, there's a small update on the situation there. They sold, they've had three sales in the Wiseman Creek Drainage now and that represent ten cup locks. And they started salvage logging on one couple up now and will start the other salvage logging operation after the May long weekend. So we'll be watching this situation really closely and just seeing how it affects the profile for the community below. And and BCTS, I mean, they've been, they've been a decent partner to work with and they're doing what their engineering and engineers are saying is an okay idea, but we're, you know, still not completely sure that it is a good idea. So we'll keep an eye on it and work closely with BCTS to see if there is causing any problems and and ask them to halt if we're seeing any signs of soil degradation or any instances of slumping that may cause more issues in the drainage. So do you want to go to the next slide? Yeah, thanks. That's for our comprehensive communication plan. We fully integrated the community with the Alertable, the Alertable app. We are posting on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We're integrating our socials with Sycamore's socials. And we are going one step further or two steps further. We're having regular meetings with the community. Another one is scheduled for spring. And we are doing regular email updates with the community. There wasn't anything over the winter because, of course, as long as there's snow in the drainage, then we're breathing a lot easier. So we just sent updates to the community here this past week and we are planning a community meeting prior to the upcoming debris flow season. And then we are we are calling them directly as necessary. So we have Lanny in the community. We have Kathy, who's Kathy is our ESS coordinator. And she is in direct contact with most residents in the Sycamore Street Mobile Home Park. So when there's certain issues or more vulnerable populations, we're contacting them directly and letting them know what's going on. So we are very close with this community and we'll continue to be close with this community. So we're, the community is aware that the city, the science isn't exact and we may ask them to evacuate or we may put them on alert for evacuation and then not evacuate them all. And we've discussed the kind of the evacuation fatigue issues with the community. We said, we're gonna ask you to do this. Something may not happen. And if it doesn't, please do evacuate when we ask you to go again. And we're not gonna take these decisions lightly. And we really want to make sure that the residents are safe and we're gonna get you back in your home as soon as we possibly can. So I think we've developed a certain level of trust in the community and we're hopeful that it will continue on through this second year. Once we get in past this season into the third year, our risk profiles are diminishing exponentially. So and once for five years, I don't know, we've had all the regrows in the area, we start getting into the situation where this drainage isn't as prone to debris flow as it was before. So with that, I'll I'll take any questions that you guys may have.
Thanks, Derek. Counsel, Counsel Evans.
Hi, thanks. Um. I I feel like we should be writing a letter to the boss of the BCTS to tell them to stop logging, give some more time for the girls to kick in. Because I agree that it's it's a worry and we never wanted that to happen, I don't think. And it's it's happening. They're just doing it. And I just feel like we should be putting a serious letter together and finding, you know, who to send it to to get them to stop. That's that's what I feel like. Thank you. Great update.
That should answer the chair. We, the board did send a letter to BCTS. On this, theoretically, there's a number of letters exchanged back and forth with the CSRD board on this issue. And Kelly, did the counselor, did they send a letter as well or were we just using the board to communicate that message?
We we did respond with referral and we basically, I think, was whatever the CSRD says, we went with, we shared some information, we responded with the same.
Okay, thanks. So we did, we did respond from Sycamore.
Counselor Rich.
Through the chair. Thank you. Wow, what a wealth of information. So my first question would be, I got about nine, so you have to bear with me.
Yeah, absolutely.
First question is, who's logging it?
So through the chair, I'm sorry, I don't know who swat those cup locks. But it would be, it's BCTS's responsibility to determine whether it should be logged or not.
Okay. So is that something where we can get information to find out who's logging it?
Yeah, through the chair, it's publicly available information on who does cut blocks, yeah.
So I will take a look in that. Again, I agree with Counselor Evans. If it's iffy and it's back and forth and if it should be logged or not logged, I feel we're better off holding off. And that's just an opinion. Is there a reforestation plan?
Yeah, through the chair, if you were dealing with BCTS, they told us that, as with all the cup locks, we'll be replanting it. And they they were suggesting that that was part of the reason why it was a good idea because of reforestation. Our engineers have told us that the natural growth that happens anyways with the natural shrubbery that grows back fairly quickly is gonna stabilize that slope regardless.
Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, because it just depends how they log it and what the reforestation and how it's taken. So if it's clear cut and the way the logs are moving, it's gonna make a difference on the way the growth comes and how they plant and how those trees then come back, right? Because that's, that's what will stabilize ground at the end, the ground at the end of the day. And then just on a different note, do we have a plan through, and this may be through the chair, sorry, calling. So there's a lot of retired folks out in that community and I love the fact that there is a phone out to them to not just email. But do we have anything through the community that we've got that we're checking on our elderly? Last time with the fire, I ended up there personally with people that didn't know there was a fire happening. So do we have anything through Sycamore? And appreciate everything you're doing, but that that we can get to our people quickly.
So through the chair, Chiva Gino has been just an amazing partner through this whole thing. And he's going down to the Mobile Home Park every time we have an activation. The Hootsaw Emergency Program is your emergency program and we liaise with the district employees continuously to make sure that you guys are fully up to speed and are engaging you with the the kind of the boots on the groundwork. And Chiva Gino has been just an excellent partner in that regard.
Okay, third question, because I'm an animal person. The SPCA in Salmon Arm is open from twelve to four, Monday to Friday. They do not have an emergency. There is an emergency number. If you call it, you don't get someone immediately. When the fires happened, it took forty-eight hours for them to respond to evacuation of people's animals. And when they were, when when we were dealing with that, private rescues actually brought in a hundred and four crates and had private people driving through the subdivision, handing out crates to the community so people would leave the area. Is it possible that we lease on with the SPCA and that everybody in that mobile home park has a carrier or crate for their animals on their deck so that when, and if this happens, that we're not set in that position where there's a lot of people that don't have a carrier for cats so they don't leave?
Yeah, through the chair. Those pet evacuation plans have been communicated to each and every resident. And and whether it's a crate for every person or a crate on every deck, it's not necessarily that situation because that might not be what they need in that particular instance, but we do have a number of crates. I would suggest that if you're having a hard time getting ahold of the SPCA, then contact the Emergency Operations Center. We set that up in the boardroom at the CSRD. And our role is to get those groups activated quickly and to call the appropriate people. We do have those backline numbers to those contacts for the SPCA and and the animal groups that we may need to engage to do that type of work. So I would say that forty-eight hours is too long to wait and the EOC can help in that regard. That's why we're there. And and certainly, we have gone through a pet evacuation plan with each one of those residents in the Mobile Home Park.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Counselor Rich.
You're the chair. Thank you very much, Derek. Great report. Just wondering, are you including, when you say the Wiseman Creek Trailer Park, are you including the two-mile residents as well in the in the notices and also the six-mile, of course?
Through the chair, the short answer is no. And and the reason for that is that they're not at risk from this particular debris flow event. If it's a really, really intense, high-volume rainstorm, short duration, there is a chance that the debris can go over the highway and affect the residents down below. So we are in contact with them. But it would have to be a really extreme event to affect that community.
Yeah, okay, cool. That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor McCain?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I I just wanted to say that's a very comprehensive plan and proactive, which is very pleasant to see also. So thank you for all your work in that.
Thank you very much.
Derek, Counselor Beach, do you have anything?
No, it's pretty, pretty big operation. And I guess the only thing that I wanted to clarify with the salvage logging, just because of the use of salvage logging. Are they salvaging burnt timber or? Okay, because I was, I was thinking originally of the last debris flow and fallen logs, but no, they're salvaging dead timber or burnt timber. Okay.
Thanks. Counselor Bailey, do you have anything? Counselor Bailey?
No, sorry, I don't have anything.
Okay, thanks. Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, I forgot to mention that it's supported by Counselor Rich and Counselor Evans' petition on on Aaron decided caution and not log. So I'm supporting that.
Okay, no, it sounds good. And yes.
Okay, no, it sounds good. And yes, the, as far as residents and taking care of, letting everyone know in town, I think there's a neighborhood emergency program as well. There's lots of little programs that fit into this great big program, so we're, we're in good hands. So thank you very much. Anyone else have anything to say? Do you guys want to put a resolution or move that we write a letter again? And?
Yeah, make a motion that we direct staff to write another letter saying that we should errand aside a caution and not log, at least, at least for one more fresher season.
Counsel Rich, seconds. All in favor? Okay, Harry, we will do that. Derek, thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate you being here and making Sycamore's a, a part of your community. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, your work. And you've got a, you've got a team behind you that's really taking this issue very, very seriously and, and will continue to update you as it, as necessary.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, let's keep moving here. We're gonna have Development Services quarterly updates. So Scott, can you take it away, please?
And?
Can you either mic it or maybe stand at the podium so that folks, everyone can hear you?
I did a different, clearly, for the three different departments. By law enforcement, you can see the, the numbers on the screen, twenty-seven new files, over a hundred questions or concerns. Some of those develop into bylaw enforcement action, often they're taken care of with just a phone call or a site visit. Some tickets issued, but overall, this is the, the slower time of year, January to March, it's usually pretty slow. So probably the next quarterly report, you'll see an uptick in, in some of the ticketing as people start coming here, parking, using the wharf, using the parks and things like that. Go before, any questions?
Counsel, any questions? That was super quick. Very good. Carry on.
Then the, next we have the, the building permit reports comparing to January to March last year. I think that will, ten more permits, but I think the value is about, I'll say roughly half or forty-five percent of what, what it was last year. Yeah, the, the single-family dwellings that you can see, the thirty-nine thousand, those are likely in Parksville where they're moving into the modular units. Another big number is the three hundred thousand for the moving demolition. So that's probably a property down in Belleville that we'll talk about later today. But yeah, any, any question on these, we can answer.
Counsel? Carry on.
And then our Development Services update. So this goes to, this is a, a summary, but we do at each of the Planning and Development Committee meetings, we go over the, the new applications, and then there's actually a little bit more information there on the, the previous applications. But here's just the update for the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. And then just the, the permits that have been issued. So, you know, we, we received sixteen permits, six have been issued, the rest of them are, are working their way through the process. And then just the next slide is the, the current applications. A couple of those will be coming to council tonight. But yeah, just, and then kind of you can tell the, the year we receive them by the first number. So some of them were received in twenty twenty-one, and we're, we're working through those. And then, yeah, the newer ones, the higher numbers, most recently received. But you can see if we're waiting for additional information or if they're coming to a council or Planning and Development Committee meeting.
Counsel, any questions? Looks like we're on trend for twenty twenty-two, but the same numbers for development permits?
Yeah, I think so. We'll probably see, you know, as people start wanting to build, you know, we'll get busier, same as by law enforcement in the summertime, it's the, the busy time.
Yeah, okay. Awesome. Thanks, Scott. Okay, elected officials' standard of conduct. Shawna, manager of financial services. Recommendation that the committee support implementation of the elected officials' standard of conduct by law number ten three seven twenty twenty-three substantially in the form of outlining the attachments and direct staff to bring forward the bylaw to the May tenth, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting for first, second, and third reading. Shawna, do you want to, oh, let's, let's get a mover. Counsel Bushel, Counsel Rich. Shawna, you want to take it away?
Sure. I spoke briefly to this at the last committee of the whole. We talked about why we were looking at the implementation of the standard of conduct, either by law or policy for, for elected officials. Just consideration of this has to happen within the first six months of the new council being put in place, so we're well within our timeframe. We went through sort of the background as to how we got to where we are, what those best practices and recommendations from UBCM are. You guys had seen a draft policy at that time. I've expanded on that draft policy or draft by law, pardon me, including the procedures of how we go about looking at a breach of the conduct and sort of what the ramifications, you know, who looks after the procedure and how we go about putting sort of some punitive stuff in place. So do you want me to high-level go through what the bylaw is looking like at this point? Does anybody have any questions on the staff report?
I think you should go ahead in high level.
So really what we're looking at, what the bylaw looks at is what does, what does conduct look like, right? What does that standard of conduct look like? There's foundational principles that were put forth by UBCM. We're including that as our best practices. So really, we're just looking at, you know, that council complies with all laws, that there's general conduct that, that is implemented. There's a respect for your meeting processes, what it looks like for interactions of staff, taking in mind our bullying and harassment policy that we do have in place, that does apply as well to council, interactions with public and the media, conduct for meetings, handling of confidential information and conflicts of interest. So all of that is outlined within the policy or within the bylaw. And then we look at those foundational principles. The foundational principles are, you know, integrity and honesty, accountability, which is with transparency, respect, and leadership and collaboration. And it details sort of what that looks like, what those foundational principles and how they apply to you as elected officials in your conduct. Sort of the piece that you guys hadn't had a look at before, because we were waiting for that legal, legal opinion, is sort of the investigation, compliance, and enforcement, what that procedure, what those procedures look like. There's an informal process and a formal process. All complaints would be handled by the CAO or corporate officer. And then from there, they, them having sort of a look at informally, where does this go? Is it a breach? And then going on beyond maybe getting legal, obtaining legal opinion at that time through solicitor, and then appointing a third-party investigator to go through a formal investigation process. Having that report then delivered back. And ultimately, they would have recommendations on, you know, whether or not it was a true breach of conduct, or conduct of the standard of conduct, what it may look like, look like for enforcement, and the ultimate decision being brought back to council and council as a whole having that decision-making process as to how they want to move forward for the implementation of, you know, whether it's a letter of reprimand, an apology out to the public. And all of this is made public throughout this, this bylaw as well. The timing of it can be in camera and then released out to the public, but all of those procedures are outlined in detail and have been legally vetted through this. Sometimes there may be, you know, that, that's, it's, falls under a breach of criminal code, right? And then it goes off to there, and we would, we would hold anything in here and just put it on suspension while that goes through. So final determination by council, what those remedies look like, and that you guys have that final say in what those remedies are. And we would tie those remedies to the remuneration policy that we have in, or that we have in place for elected officials. And I'm looking for your support to then bring that back. And I would hope to a committee of the whole and have a robust, robust sort of conversation with you guys as to what you feel would be the right measures or the right remedies through that, through that policy. Any questions?
Counsel, any comments?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Ian.
Yeah, so I've gone through, I, I mean, this won't, this is probably not as surprising as anybody. So I've got read through this several times. And I, I think we can do a little bit more work on the clarity of it and really try to bring it down to size a little bit as well. Like, some of the, some of the things that are in here, we already do have covered off. Like, certainly when we talk about staff and conduct around staff and how we have to interact with staff, I think that's something that could be outside of this document and covered under, you know, normal, you know, staff interaction tools that we already have in place. The, the, and, and I'm, I'm happy to actually put into like an email kind of the, you know, the suggested kind of changes that I would have. But I would say when it comes to the formalized process of investigation and everything, I think there should be a little bit higher bar than just leveling kind of a complaint. And whether there needs to be a sponsor for that complaint, I'm thinking it has to maybe, maybe, you know, sponsored by at least one counselor, especially if it comes from, you know, the general public. So that we're, we're ensuring that there is a, you know, a bit of a process here to, to get this to the CAO's desk and to get it, you know, kind of considered. So I, I think there's, there's some things that we could do that obviously protect the spirit of this and kind of what we're doing. But, you know, tighten it up a little bit, and I think we could probably even shorten it down to, to something a little bit more around three or four pages, but still kind of keep the integrity of it. So I, I don't kind of know what council wants to do with this next and how we want to go about putting those suggestions forward. But that's kind of my high-level thoughts on it.
Thanks, Ian. Any other comments from counsel? Shawna, how you, how do you feel about?
Thank you through the chair, Counsel Bailey. I would accept, like, would welcome any sort of suggestions. If you want to put that in email format. And we can, I could definitely, you know, we can take a look at that, what the implementation of that looks like, and just ensuring that we still have that integrity, that if this is ever, always looking at that if it ever does go to the court of law, that it's upheld, right? That we have enough clarity and enough information in there that, that we feel confident in that situation.
Correct, yeah. I, it, I mean, these are really new provisions as well. So it's gonna be interesting how this kind of evolves over time. And i- if it ever, to my knowledge, none of this has kind of gone to a court proceeding yet. So a lot of those things, I think, will be developed over, you know, court cases as, as this kind of evolves and people may challenge some of them, depending on how, you know, municipality brings them forward. So it'll, it'll be a, I think, a good process overall. But I imagine how we start off and how it looks in ten years will probably be totally different.
Thanks, Ian. One comment I do want to make is a staff interaction. I think this has to go into this document. I don't think there's a separate document for staff interaction, so I think it does need to roll into this document. So that's just my comments on that. And as well, I do like, you know, having another counselor present or to, you know, communicate with as well. So I, how should we move this? Should we put a friendly amendment that the friendly amendment that is moving this to third reading? For me, ten, right now, correct?
It's right through the chair. So the, the recommendation is that, is that you support the bylaw and that staff bring the bylaw forward to the May tenth meeting for first, second, and third reading.
So could we say?
With the changes. It's gonna have the changes, sorry.
Yeah, oh, maybe I could just make an amendment to that, is that we support it in principle and that, I don't know how to word this, but in this period between coming back to council, encourage to provide written feedback on it. Something like that, you know, so, so that we can maybe add some insights into it or changes that we could consider at the May tenth meeting.
Maybe, yeah, maybe we can make a friendly amendment to it. Just hold that thought, Ian. Go ahead, Counsel McCabe.
Thank you through the chair. Yeah, I don't want to go against the counselor's wishes there, but I, I think the document's okay as is. I mean, I, I think staff has gathered best practices from a few different municipalities and embedded into this document, so it's, it's not the bleeding edge. It's, it's documents that I believe some communities have already adopted and merged into what works for Sycamore's and been vetted by legal. I don't know, do we need a hundred percent consensus before we move forward with this document? Or does one council concern, or revisit? Or how, how does that process work? I'm just wondering, do we need a consensus on this or a hundred percent? Or, or, you know, three quarters, or how do we move this document forward?
So, most definitely, through the chair. So today, before you, we have a bylaw and a policy, right? So I think it was, are we gonna go a bylaw route or are we gonna go a policy route? So we really didn't talk about the policy that was attached here, because staff is recommending to go with the bylaw. It has more teeth in it than the, than the policy does, and we can tie it to a potential penalty or something within our remuneration bylaw, right? So it's just a stronger document. And our resolution today is that we that we bring it forward substantially in the form as outlined in the attachment. So it's not a hundred percent. This is still a rough draft that's substantially done. So if there are some minor tweaks brought forward, we don't need to make any real amendments to the resolution that, that we're voting on right now.
We can share that with?
We can share it and make sure it's appropriate and that any changes are incorporated appropriately without rewriting this whole document and, and brought forward. And then any changes that were made will bring it before council, and you will all see it before you actually vote on the bylaw itself. Does that make sense?
It does. It seems a little convoluted, I guess. Because we're gonna take this, and some folks, all of us, are gonna send our comments in to Shawna, and she's gonna tweak it. Is everyone else okay with the, the way the document is written and, and presented? Counsel Evans?
Yes, thank you. I, I think the staff has done their, their due diligence and the, the document's excellent. I'm open to, to small, small things, but I'm ready to vote on this.
Go ahead, Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, so that's fine. I mean, I, it can go forward as, just as long as everyone's kind of read through this and understands exactly what it means and the implications of it. I think, you know, we've had, this is our first discussions on it. I certainly have some concerns over with, around the definitions on some of the things, for sure. What a, what a conflict of interest is, or what is a benefit to a counselor. Like, sometimes there is imprecise language that leads to more problems than if you just clean it up at the front. You know, there, there's a lot of different implications in here, and I don't think we should be rushed to do it. I'm not criticizing staff at all. But what I'm, what I'm saying is, it deserves a really good look, because this is something that, that, that is an important document that's gonna, you know, govern us. So that's all I'm saying. And, and, and I think that there could be some opportunities to, to improve upon it. That's it.
Okay, any other comments? Go ahead, Shawna, and then.
Thank you through the chair. I'm absolutely taking under consideration what Counsel Bailey is saying. And if you guys want, I mean, we can amend the resolution. We can, and I can bring it back to a committee of the whole again with more information before we move forward.
Go ahead, Counsel Beach. That was, through the chair, that was kind of the gist of my question is.
That was, through the chair, that was kind of the gist of my question is, are we, we're not on a deadline to actually, we're working on this, right? So we're not on a deadline, though maybe it's best not to rush if there's any doubt at all on thing.
All right. Counsel McCave, thanks, Counsel Beach.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Um, I think the way Kelly explained that we can still respect Counsel Bailey's wishes or concerns and, and vote on this as is, and it leaves room to address Counsel Bailey's concerns. I, I think so. So I think we can still vote yes and, and not ignore any counselor's concerns. And, and it gives, uh, staff some room to make some changes.
Counsel Beach.
Through the chair, are we, do we have to vote or could we vote? Should we be voting for a by, by law versus a policy? Like, are we supposed to be voting on that piece today for sure? Or are we considering, no, we wouldn't have both.
We would.
This is a bylaw.
Yeah, I have the bylaw, but the policy is there too. So we have to decide on whether or not we're going to have a bylaw versus just a policy.
The staff recommendation is that counsel proceed.
Use a bylaw.
Bylaw versus.
Oh, okay, that's good. So that's what we're considering right now. That's all we're considering. Okay.
I guess the question here, so go ahead, Counsel Rich.
Through the chair, I just feel like there's a lot of debate still going on here so that we should just put a pause on, uh, put a, a friendly amendment. Shauna can get us some more information and we can come back, um, a- and make a firm decision. That's how I feel.
Thank you. I think that Shauna has done her due diligence. I think that she's added all the information that she can. I think her concern right now is if we want to add some feedback, she'll take it into consideration, wrap it into, or send it back to council for consideration before we pass the bylaw.
Um, through the chair, absolutely. I will take any, um, comments, any sort of concerns, I, we address them. Um, I think Malcolm had said this before and I'll just address it. Yes, we have, you know, this is sort of the amalgamation of about three municipalities as well as U B C M recommendations and fully vetted through legal. Plus they, as they've gone through this process with multiple municipalities, um, have their recommendations of what they like to see and that has all been incorporated. Um, but if there are concerns that it's too lengthy clarity on wording, I would rather address that now so that we all have a pause, have a bylaw that we are a hundred percent comfortable with. Um, and come back to you for consideration again.
So I think that's how counsel, a, a majority of what I'm picking up right now is how counsel feels. So should we, is it in our best interest to not move this forward, not um, proceed with this and bring it back to council? Or how the staff want us to deal with this?
Could I maybe make a recommendation?
Again, through the chair. So we're not, we're, we're just asking staff to, uh, bring this to May tenth council for first, second reading. So this is just community of the whole. We're not doing bylaw readings here. We're just recommending, uh, that substantially in the form is outlined. So that still leads rooms for, leads, lead room for concern for change as, as indicated by Counsel Bailey and any other counselor. So I, I think we can vote yes to this, that what we're saying is, uh, we're asking staff to bring it to May tenth for first, second and third reading. In, in a slightly different form incorporating any recommendations that any counselor might have.
That would, okay, Kelly.
Yeah, and, and furthered that, thank you, uh, through the chair. If we decide, uh, we want to make some more changes, we can just do first reading at the next council meeting. Make some more modifications if we so feel like it, so we're comfortable, then do second and third reading. So there is flexibility in that and, uh, Counsel McCave is correct. It, it does indicate as substantial in, in this form. So there is still flexibility in, in the resolution and this isn't set in stone. This is just a committee making a recommendation to council. And council still, even though it's the same group, can, can modify it at a later date.
That's great. That's fair. Okay, then, uh, Counsel Bailey, that, did you hear that? We can.
Yeah, no, I.
So we can move this forward, though.
I, yeah, I, I think that makes sense. Yeah, I, I just want to make, uh, my, my intent on this is just to make sure we take a good look at it. We're, we're all, we're all there and we're, we're working out any, you know, red flags we see now rather than trying to figure it out later. That's my intent. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, let's, I think we beat this up and up. Sarah, did we beat this up enough or we did? We called the question.
Just a, through the chair, question to Kelly, should we change the wording for first reading? Are we okay with?
That's fine. It's just a recommendation from the committee.
From the committee.
Yeah, we're fine.
Yeah, and council must consider it within the first six months after its first regular council meeting. So within the month of May.
Six months already. Wow, how time flies. Okay, let's call the question all in favor. Carrie, thanks.
Okay, moving along, recommendation that the committee support the inclusion of standard of standard of conduct breach provisions within the District of Sycamore's Council Remuneration and Expense Bylaw Number nine nine seven twenty twenty one and direct staff to bring forward the amended bylaw for council consideration. Shauna?
So that is the piece, uh, bringing forward after the act to have a discussion on what that remuneration policy would look like with those penalties.
What's that?
Back at a mover? And then we'll get into discussion.
Through the chair, I don't think Counsel, Counselor Bailey heard.
Counselor Bailey, did you hear Shauna?
So are we, yeah, I'm just a little confused. So are we talking about the policy now? I thought we were debating whether we want a policy or whether we want a bylaw. And we kind of just decided we wanted a bylaw. Is that correct?
That response?
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the, through the chair, thank you. So there was a second, there was a second recommendation within my staff report. And it was also looking at this bylaw that we have put forth. There is a part where it ties to our, or to your remuneration bylaw for penalties. And so the second recommendation that I was looking for was the ability to draft something, bring forward options and have a discussion within the community, within the committee of the whole at a later date to look at that, the amendment of that, um, bylaw as it ties to the bylaw that we're speaking about today.
Conduct, the conduct bylaw.
The conduct bylaw.
Yeah, so the question is, is do, do we want to attach a penalty for a breach of our code of conduct? Really, that's the question.
Go ahead, Malcolm.
So yeah, we're really just the committee of all asking staff to bring forward recommendations for council to consider what, uh, what that might look like. So, and, and have a bylaw attached, uh, for remuneration. So, uh, yeah, we're, we're just asking staff to bring us more information so we can make an important decision on whether we want it or not. I, I believe.
I believe that's correct too. Okay, well, let's get, uh, can I get a mover on this? Uh, Counsel Bushel, Counsel Beach, is there any more discussion? This is for information for Cal. It'll come back with some suggestions, right? Okay. All in favor?
Carrie, thanks, Shauna. Sorry that was so complicated.
Yes. Bylaw that has a, has a lot of information in it, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, draft of the strategic plan for twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six for the council term. Kelly, take it away.
Yes, um, so I'm delighted to prepare a, uh, draft strategic plan. So we met a couple of weeks ago, uh, for a day, put our heads together and came up with our priorities, which are health and wellness, housing, community safety, recreation, tourism and economic growth. They also came up with a vision to strive to be a vibrant, healthy community that embraces strong social, economic, environmental values. And we identified some of our core values as a council and staff district, how we want to deal with people. Or how we want to do business. We want to be collaborative. We want to work with integrity, leadership. We want to have excellent customer service. We want to be great stewards and obviously to be accountable to our taxpayers. Uh, in addition, our chart in, in, uh, includes, um, details of tactics of how we want to achieve those priorities and then council members assigned to each priority. And so based on our discussions, uh, Sarah and I worked together to create this lovely two-page, nice visual document. So it's here before you guys today to have a discussion, any tweaks, modifications? Did we capture everything? We'll bring this back, uh, to a regular council meeting to endorse this and, and finalize it. But this really is just here today for discussion and comments on anything that you like, you don't like. We're here for feedback, so don't feel bad saying how you feel. This is your document.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Before I take questions, I just want to, for the gallery, um, council has worked since this council, I've been on this council. We have chosen to go with a portfolio system as opposed to committees, which means that each council takes a, a group of, of issues that they are passionate about or have some expertise in. And that's, that's where they want to work and, um, spend their time researching. So this is similar to the strategic priorities that we had with last council, except it is molded just a little bit different, shaped just a little bit different. Um, with, um, as opposed to a long list, there's six, uh, defined groups that, uh, that we want to focus on and of course municipal assets right in the middle that, um, um, is, is key to our community. So having said that, that this is not a, a change from what we were doing before, only looks a little bit different, but basically same idea as a portfolio system. Counsel McCave.
Thank you through the chair. Um, first off, great job getting that into two pages. And I, I like the smaller version. That's, that's great to have that as a two-page document. I, I might be, uh, getting old, getting old and having some memory problems. But under, I don't know where we'd be under, uh, recreation and tourism or, uh, economic growth or maybe both. Didn't we talk a little bit about camping or campground? Like, how would I, how, where would that fit in? I don't see it, I don't see it really captured anywhere. But I, I thought it was on some of our boards that we jotted down. I thought we jotted down camping or campground.
Look through, we, we captured everything that was jotted down on the board. So we're happy to in, incorporate it somewhere. That's the mutual agreement of everybody, but it, it wasn't on a list.
Okay, thank, thank you. So, yeah, I just, um, two previous councils both thought camping was an economic driver for our community. I don't, maybe there's too many parties or I don't know how we didn't discuss that. I'm sorry.
Counsel Beach.
Through the chair, um, the one thing that I'm not seeing in here, um, that I think we did talk about uh, and, and maybe would address the camping project, um, is under stewardship is where I think it could be easily put in is to talk about natural assets. Where we say we are fiscally responsible and make sound decisions about the public assets of our community. But to be very clear, public and natural assets would really help people understand the nature of campgrounds and the benefit of all those natural assets. Can, and that's the only, I mean, you could fit it in pretty easily there, but if you read through, there's no reference in this to natural assets.
And I remember there is under municipal assets right there. It's a, for municipal natural assets initiative. Under municipal assets.
Page that we've got here. Oh, it's, oh, natural assets initiative, okay.
Yeah, and good. And Sarah and I did go on to the natural asset initiative webpage to, okay. That's kind of the, what they're calling it is the, the natural asset initiative.
Can I just go ahead? That again, yeah, sorry about that. I didn't read it. I'm getting old. Um, stewardship, though, I like the sound of stewardship. And I, and I like the fact that we can be stewards of nature. Could we sneak natural in with public assets? Or would that change the intention of that stewardship? I just feel like that's where we're headed.
We're naturally.
No, not in, yeah, I know, but under stewardship as one of our, as one of our values. That's, should we do that? Think about it?
We can definitely think about it as we go around the room. Just hang on to that thought, Counsel Evans.
Uh, yeah, thank you through the chair. I was just going to say, i- it'd be natural to keep the campground, um, and put it under the, just add it to the recreation and tourism box. Because, uh, I, I too want to see that go on and it fits well under that.
Okay, thank, Counsel Rich. No, Counsel Bushel. I got nothing. Counsel Bushel.
The chair, um, yeah, there's a couple of things under recreation and tourism. And one was, I know we talk about specific trails like the rail trail and we also talk about, uh, Allhead Bike Park and the pump track and that. But we don't really talk about our trails, like our other trails in Sycamore's. So I just, you know, just tweak it a little bit, include it somewhere where our Sycamore's trails and maybe something to do with our active transportation plan. But I did kind of, I agreed with Malcolm on the, on the campground. I know we, we might have talked about it, but we didn't write it down or I can't remember. There's lots going on. And it's not whether it be a District of Sycamore's campground or whether it be a private campground. Cause you have somebody right now that wants to do a private count, uh, campground in Sycamore's. So we, it's, d- does that fall under economic growth? I don't know, but it's something we shouldn't, we should look at. That's, you know, so that's, I kind of had that. And then another one, we kind of, I don't know, we, we messed, uh, was it in, it was included before was communities in bloom. We don't, you know, we, uh, we don't have, uh, uh, we didn't have a spot for that. I don't know if that's, we had it before, I think.
I thought I seen it here somewhere.
No, it's not. Well, we're sticking to buckets and what makes sense in buckets. So just because we had it before doesn't mean we're not going to support communities in bloom. Still part of who we are and what we do.
Absolutely.
The key strategic priority.
Absolutely. Thanks, Kelly. And I, and I agree. It is part of who we are right now. It's like the chamber. It's like the active. It's like our tourism or tech. It is part of our community and we will continue to support it. It needs to be um, on our strategic priorities because it's already an accomplished functioning, um, um, program already. So, uh, Counsel Rich.
I got some. Through the chair, um, I think what happened with the campground is we went, we revisited what the, the prior council's strategic plan was, and that was one of the things on. And then at, at, kind of at the end, we kind of went, um, it wasn't?
No, it's, it's not on there.
But we did.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
But anyhow, my opinion is again, I support that, that we continue to, to pursue that if it's public or private. Um, I think it's a great asset to Sycamore's.
So perhaps when we look at economic growth and we have, uh, let's see here, attract year-round industry and support economic diversification. Wouldn't that, a campground fall under that, uh, private one or like would it, would this fall under economic growth?
It would. I think it would hit recreation and tourism and economic growth. It could probably hit either one. Might be more fitting in recreation and tourism though.
Yeah.
And, and a spinoff would be economic growth. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, okay. Um, Ian, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I guess every, I, I, I thought we did talk about the campground, but then we highlighted that it's been on several different strategic plans and I, I guess it didn't go forward or hasn't gone forward. I, I mean, I'm finding either way to put it on. Um, I, I'd just say that, um, we could probably cover it off on what we're doing on economic growth as well. Um, I, 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 I think generally anybody who wants to come into town and do a campground or do anything that would help grow the town, I, I suspect council would be pretty receptive. So, but I, I'm. Help grow the town, I I suspect council would be pretty receptive, so, but I I'm totally supportive of that. So overall, the, I think the document does. Cover everything that we talked about according to my notes, but. Yeah, and I also think it's it's great to have it in two pages, because you know, residents can really just. You know, look at it and have a very clear picture of kind of what we're going to work on for the next four years, so I think good job to staff on. On putting this together and getting all of it shoved into two pages.
That's awesome, thanks. Kelly?
Yeah, so a couple of things here, I just wanted to ask and get some clarity on. First is on this develop and strengthen relationships with strategic partners, we've got this list here of all of our strategic partners. Want to keep those names on there, I just wanted. Like I know we specifically identified them in the meeting, do we want to keep them on here?
That would be, so that is Counselor Beach and Counselor Rich that are the. Leads on those, so. Counselor Beach, Counselor Rich, what are your thoughts? Do we need to list them or do you know that? We know that they're there and and part of our community. Counselor Beach.
Through the chair. I, we know. We know who we're going to talk to. I look at this document as important for informing the public. As to sort of. What we value as important and how we're approaching looking after. Their town basically and its safety, so. I think it's beneficial to leave those, personally, I do feel it's beneficial to leave. Those us, those partnerships listed. Because it serves us third to to the public that might be reading this. It's bad time reading.
I don't know how she won.
Counselor Rich.
Through the cap, uh through the chair, I, yeah, I agree. I think it just kind of gives clarity to the public. It's easy to know what you know, but if you don't know.
Yeah, okay, good point, Kelly.
Good, good, good take on there, I just paid, did you?
I I go with the the portfolio holders, what they say. I I agree as Counselor Rich and Counselor Beach.
So let's have a quick conversation about the campground as to economic development or. Parks and or recreation and tourism. I do believe it like Council Bay is, it's a spin-off to economics and. So I, for me, that's where it would fit for me. Counselor Rich.
Through the chair, I think it is economic growth, because if we're going private or public, just looking for a campground. We may not be responsible for it, so if it's recreation tourism, it seems like that's more our responsibility. Compared to bringing someone in.
So Counselor Bailey, how do you feel? Because you're on recreation and tourism and you're on economic growth. And Counselor Bush, so you're on both of those as well.
I I I feel like we would absolutely do everything we could if somebody wanted to do. A private campground, I I think chances are that's, that's probably how a campground would come to town unless we have. You know, a property identified that we would do it on a municipal level, which I I don't think we do, so. I, you know what, I defer to Gord on this, Counselor Bush, whatever he decides, I'm good with.
Through the chair, I I'm good with economic growth, I mean, I I I'm putting it in that category, I mean, it's kind of like recruit Lakeside Hotel developer. It's like.
Yeah, same.
Recruit campground, you know, developer, you know. Our partner, you you could say partner as well, so I'm I'm good with that, I mean, and we work with the Economic Development Corporation. And and keep, you know, keep pursuing it.
Excellent, thanks Counselor Bush, Counselor Evans, how are you feeling about that?
What he said.
Everybody. I know where, Counselor Beach.
I I'm still back where I thought we were working on.
Hey, well, we are now. I I I think it was somewhere in there and then we just got into something and. I just, yeah, it may have just been.
I I I think.
We're good.
So I mean, whether it's, it is an economic driver, no matter where you put it. I I think, when I think about the difference between economic growth. As we have it set up here, the sort of the intention was to talk about diversifying. That we're not as dependent on. The tourism industry, right? So that would be the only thing, but I think it fits in either one.
All right, so, okay, Kelly, do you want to add anything, please?
Um yeah, I just wanted to see if if council felt okay, uh under recreation to kind of, there's. These three items all relate to the development and investment in outdoor recreational spaces. So if we had something more generic like develop and investment in outdoor recreational spaces. And then we can put in brackets such as, you know, and then list them off, because they're all outhead bike park, finless and pump track, skating rink. Pavilion at Beach Park, they're all similar, they're outdoor recreational spaces. And we can tie in the trails to that too.
That's a good suggestion.
So right behind, continue to pursue the development of and then add. Because we want to pursue the development of these, we don't, we're not just listing them for fun.
No, they are developing, investing in outdoor recreational spaces and then we will. List them off.
Is everybody? Counselor Beach.
I I'm good with that, I just want to go back to talk about stewardship.
We'll circle back to you, Counselor McCabe.
So I like the idea of grouping those in. But we could still keep, I believe. The rail trail separate and not group it in, keep it. And then from from there. Oh, we'll keep, keep the rec center bullet, I guess, but the last three bullets. Right, I support that.
All good, okay, so let's circle back to Pam.
Okay, um through the chair. Stewardship. Is a really important value and I just feel like a lot of what. We've been talking about and and did talk about when we were strategizing. Is recognizing the value of our na- natural assets, but so I. I think that to have natural assets listed in that value statement. Would really be good, because it would bring up that sense of. What what is the value of our nature that we live in, because it it's incredible, right? And we need to keep that at the front of everything that we're thinking about.
The, go ahead, Counsel Evans.
Yeah, I I think that you could easily put that into stewardship by saying we're fiscally responsible, make sound decisions about the public assets. Of our community and the natural resources of our region or something like that.
Yeah.
Want to add a sentence on it, I mean, something on to that, it would fit well.
And I was just gonna, I'm just gonna. I I recall when we we did this, stewardship is really important, not just the stewardship of. Our natural resources, the stewardship of of everything, absolutely everything. So having, starting to get into the weeds of that value, of that core value. I mean, we can add, we can get into the weeds of each one of those if we wanted to, but having stewardship. As we are good stewards of everything that we are going to touch. And having it listed in our priorities as municipal natural asset, we're stewards of that as well, so I think it's. I think we're, it's overlapping, but I could be wrong. Open for. So. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Counsel Bailey.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to raise my hand on here and. It's it's okay, it's a little clunky, I understand, so I appreciate people's patience. I, you know, I agree with Pam here, I. We we talked about this quite a bit and I think all of us agree. That some of the best assets of Sycamore's are the natural ones and I think just putting it in there is all we're saying. And and we talked about, you know, the concern we have around zebra mussels and and other things. And I think it it. You know, it encompasses all the stuff that we're doing already, but we are very concerned about our natural assets, so I think if we put about the public. You know, and natural assets to our community, I think that's on, that represents what I think all of us think too. Because we we know we have. A huge, you know, a huge benefit to our community is 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 their lakes or water systems, the surrounding. Woods that we all recreate in, and I think it's, I I I understand where Pam's coming from and I I I think it would be okay to put natural assets in there.
Hey, thanks Counselor Ben, we'll let Counselor McCabe go next.
Yeah, I have no problem culminating past of that, and I agree with Counselor Bailey, I mean. We have no air pollution in our community, we have no water pollution in our community, very little noise pollution, we'll be talking about train whistles, council. And in our official community plan, we have a. The health and wellness plan embedded through our official community plan that we're supposed to be looking at everything through our wellness lens. So like, like if a tire plant came to town and was going to employ a hundred people, but with black spoken here, we'd probably say no. It as an example. So, yeah, I support Pam's request to add a little extra language, that's what we are, that's what we sell, is our. Our environment, we should protect it and and.
Thanks Counselor McCabe, Counselor Rich.
Through the chair, yeah, I really like the word stewardship, it means we are looking after. Our our. The the folks that are coming up, that and and we're looking forward to to what's happening, so I I like that wording. Put in in there, I I think it has a lot of meat to it, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, through the chair, I I agree, just like Ian was saying, you know, public and natural assets of our community. But we should also maybe say our area, because you know, our area, we use our upper, the lake, the lake system and we use the mountain system, which is not. In our boundaries, but you could also add at the very end, community and area or area community.
Areas, maybe. Counselor Beach.
Yeah, thank you, I for the support through the chair. I I I like that, I like the idea of expanding it beyond the community, because we really, we really. To draw on much greater an area and. I I guess case in point is that we still have to add natural assets to our asset of valuing. And evaluation for our for our area and 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 so the danger is we take all that for granted. We can't take that for granted here and because it drives our economy and so I just kind of. This will hit you every time you read that stewardship.
Perfect, you, you got it now. Um Kelly, you'll make those changes?
Yeah.
And I guess the I areas, because we have more than one area, right, so. Counselor Bush.
Would you, would you want to use region instead of area? Like our region? You know, I don't know.
I I prefer areas, because that covers Malacoa, that covers Swansea, that covers. Yeah, yeah, when we talk regional, it reminds me of CSRD. And now we're going to Golden, we're going to Revi, we're going to, you know, and this is, this is our document for us, so that's so. Just my opinion. Just my opinion, does anyone else have other opinion on that?
Go ahead, the chair, I think if you used region, that implies shoe shop wide and and. Although it's true. Create some.
Okay.
Discussion.
Hey, we'll leave it with areas, good, good, okay, Kelly. Anything else?
Yes, is there any, I know Pam, you had mentioned something about in an email about natural gas.
That I don't like it, no, sorry.
And just, you know, I did meet with Fordas and they will be coming to a council meeting probably in June.
Yeah.
With some more information on that and in terms of clean energy and they've got a lot of stuff up their sleeve as well, so I think it's appropriate to leave it on. Start for now.
Yeah, that's a bigger discussion, we need to go there, but that's a bigger discussion.
Any other comments on the strategic priorities? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Bailey.
Yeah, no, Ian's fine, I mean. I I wouldn't have a problem and I mean, maybe Gord could put his opinion here too, to put, pursue the feasibility of bringing natural gas. And renewable energy to Sycamore's, adding it, you know, renewable energy.
Oh yeah, good with that.
I mean, I I I would welcome both, frankly.
Okay, let's add that, thanks Ian.
Yep.
Is everyone good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Are you? Good, is, okay, I I think we're all good. Perfect, Kate, Kelly's got it added. Anything else?
So then, once we bring this back to council, I'll bring it back to council endorsement and then as we make decisions, you know, there. We need to try to stay focused on these priority areas, right? So that this takes discipline, because we get scud missiles from all over and we want to be all to all people, but the more we do, the less we do sometimes. So it really, to ensure we achieve some of these things, we really need to collectively stay focused on them, so. And my goal is, once we get this finalized, is to come up with a lovely format, so that quarterly we can. This will be on every council agenda, but I will do appropriate progress updates quarterly. Which will outline each of these tactics and where we're at with them, so in a more detailed format. Visually appealing and not too many words, but just enough.
As well, when Kelly does that, council, if you've been and you, we now stay in our lanes, right? So we're not running out, you know, who's ever looking after. Bike parks is not running and. Looking after, you know, train whistles or whatever, you just kind of stay in your lane and focus on what your portfolio is. And during council meetings, I mean, but share your ideas with counselors, if you've got some good stuff that you that you hear, we need to communicate and share good ideas and best practices. Of course. But during council reports too, when this comes up, if you are working on something or have heard something, you can add that to your council report. So you could update everyone in the room as well as the folks that are in the gallery as to what's going on. With our strategic priorities. Counselor Beach.
Through the chair, just to clarify then, we should save any discussion or questions or ideas that we have. For council meetings rather than actually directly, you know, talking to.
No, you can collaborate outside the meeting and then, yeah, because that will probably keep our meetings a little bit more short. In line if if one.
Okay.
Yeah, shares their ideas outside and then brings it together as one side. Okay, Counselor McCabe.
Yeah, I just have to give up the pedestrian bridge. I've been looking hard for that one for fifty years, but that's not my portfolio anymore, so.
So keep pushing for it. Hey, Kelly?
Um yes, thank you, and through the chair, so just one more thing is to provide some clarity, so this is our council research. Portfolio system and protocol, so this is something we created in twenty fifteen, it was updated in twenty seventeen. And I know Counselor Rich phoned me just to provide some clarity on what does it mean, this portfolio system, do, you know. How do, how do I work with it? So this is a document which we will amend again, but I wanted to show. It to council. Because it explains, you know, why we're doing this, what the rationale is, these are old, so ignore these, we'll add the new ones in there. What your powers are and basically. There is no formal powers, but you can read it and then it talks about what the roles are. So to be a key point of contact. To represent and advocate council's policies and corporate positions. Related to that priority, to ensure consistent communication and messaging. To participate where appropriate as the lead counselor and working group, so I will, we're going to refine this document. As when we do the final. Strategic priority and we'll we'll update this too to make it more up to date and relevant, so everybody can get some clarity around that. Does that make sense? Everybody good with that?
Great, it's it's. Time for an update anyway.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, anything else on strategic priorities?
Draft, Kelly, do you have anything else?
So I am very delighted to have this done and I think, thank you, nice document. And I look forward to working on it and updating it.
Thank you, Kelly. Great job, staff. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on now, we're going to talk about the Southern Interior Local Government Association twenty twenty-three resolutions and nominations. And Kelly and Sarah, do you two want to take this away?
Do it. Thank you for the chair. Uh, so we're presenting this today, just provide uh, council with an opportunity to discuss uh, the resolutions that were presented um, by membership municipalities within the Southern Interior Local Government Association. I believe there are thirty-one here, three of which are from, uh, from councils. Um, and also, SOGA has also presented as the nominating committee report um, for their executive. So there's an opportunity for you to um, consider those who are putting their names forward um, to serve. Um, they also take nominations from the floor. Um, and that will be going on um, at the convention, which is taking place on April twenty-fifth, starting April twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth. Resolutions will be discussed on Wednesday and Thursday will be nominations.
Okay, so Wednesdays are just resolutions, they're not?
There's other activities.
The week?
There's other, there's other activities taking place, but the resolution starts at one fifty-five P M. Um, and then continues into the afternoon.
Okay, so a couple of things. Is anyone interested in sitting on the SOGA board? Do you want to be nominated? All right, so, so much for that. Let's just add more onto our plates because we don't have enough. Okay, so, okay, having said that, I see that the interest is maybe for next year. Um, we'll, we'll defer that, we'll defer hoping till next, nominations till next year. Okay, I would like to talk about our resolutions that are going to SOGA. We do have, sorry, are they up anywhere quick?
Yep. You can find them.
So, hey, eighteen, can we pull them up one at a time and just have a quick? So, when you get to SOGA, these are some of the things that you get to stand up and speak to. If, if you believe that, you know, in this resolution and no one's speaking to it or somebody's speaking against it, this is where you get the opportunity to get and, and put them um, correct. Share your thoughts. So, um, there's three of them here. Two, I think, are endorsed. One is not endorsed. And the one that is not, there's no recommendation on is the uh, Q E P. For inner, uh, repairing area one. So they don't have, they haven't endorsed it. They've given it no recommendation. However, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, we do have the ability to speak to it and convince them of why we think that they should be endorsing this.
Through the chair, that's correct. I spoke with Alison Slater, the SOGA, SOGA general manager. And she just indicated, um, welcome to the debate, council. Uh, the, the committees um, either felt that they didn't have enough information or they couldn't agree amongst themselves. So they said that, um, at the convention, you'll be able to, to introduce the resolution and, and provide more clarity around it.
Okay, so, Gord, are you prepared to speak to this?
Wednesday is tough for me. Um, I don't know, I, I can't say right now. Wednesday is really tough for me. If it's, it may go on Thursday, I'll be okay Thursday, but Wednesday.
But it sounds like there's a stone resolution some Wednesday from.
One is, I'm sorry, which one are we?
Councilor McCabe?
That was discussed a bit in our, our housing summit in Vancouver, that, that council originally attended. If I'm correctly, Vancouver Island doesn't have to deal with repairing area for some reason. And so they don't have that problem through their development privileges. They, they have repairing issues for some reason. Also, there was a community in the Lower Mainland, at which one?
Langford.
Equipment?
Langford.
Langford, that they somehow trained the provincial government that, uh, they can do their own Q A P. And it's not referral, it's in house for their local government. So they somehow developed a process to ensure or give level of confidence to provincial government that they have qualified people and respect the process. They, they do their own Q A P and it's not referral, it's not referral. So that was interesting.
They didn't mention how they went through that process. Because here we are going through a process to go through, a huge process to get a Q E P to approve locally as opposed to go through the province, which they used to do, but they don't do anymore. So how did they get?
Yeah.
Oh.
Councilor Bushel?
Through the chair, uh, yeah, it's, I mean, that's basically what we're trying to do, is speed up the process. It's just the province, um, it's just like our, our, our trail application for Owlhead. You know, it's been on the plate for two years and nothing happens. And, uh, I mean, Sicamous Houseboats is experiencing it, you know, all kinds of people are experiencing this problem with the province. So there comes a time where, can you not say, if you don't answer in thirty days, we'll just, you know, we're, we'll, we'll take it upon ourselves. And everybody's going, well, we, we're, we're worried about liability, putting liability on the, on the, on the, on the municipality. Well, that's why we have insurance and that's why we have staff that are qualified. If they can read a, a repairing area and it says, you know, do not damage those trees, our staff will not damage those trees. But we don't have to send it to the province to sit under a pile of papers for two years and wait them, wait for them to review it. And, you know, it just, it's the time period, it's just, it's, it's unacceptable. You'd never be able to run a business and carry on your business like that. You'd be bankrupt in a, in a month.
Yeah. Got that. Councilor Bailey?
Uh, yeah, no, I, I, I think the reason, I, I read through why they didn't give a recommendation. It looked like several of the things that we're talking about actually has gone before SOGA or U B C M. And they have passed them. And then basically the province has done absolutely nothing about it. Um, some of the, some of these recommendations go back a decade now, uh, if not longer. So, I mean, I guess maybe they felt that we're barking up the same tree. I, I, I think it's still a tree worth barking at, and barking up, especially considering, um, well, the track record here. I mean, obviously this has been an issue much, much longer than what we've even been talking about it for. Like, this is going back like a decade where clearly the province has not had enough staff or really have, um, done much to, if, if anything, to implement a timely approval process.
Thanks, Council Bailey. Council McCabe?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to condense my notes for a report, but uh, just referred some notes from, uh, the housing summit. So, uh, Lori Hall's deputy minister for land, water, resources, that's a whole long name there. Um, this was under the top of the expediting development approvals. So as a deputy minister, she's established just last few Fridays ago, uh, a dedicated housing team. So it's, it's specific for, it's a single window for, uh, affordable housing. So it's a W W W dot permit connect B C dot gov dot B C dot C. So if you go to that address, there's a dedicated uh, housing action team to ensure, uh, that you get fast track if you're looking for, if, if there's any, any, or any, or the potential government, not just through her ministry, but, but her, her ministry is the one that would have the Q A P for their repairing stuff, right? So, um, yeah, just two Fridays ago, they set up a dedicated housing action team. So there are development approvals. Um, you can track your permit through there and, and it's supposed to get fast tracked. So that's something they've set up to, uh, get through the backlog. So it's not stuck in that pile like Council Bushel was saying. And maybe Council Rich might correct me on some of that, if I got it wrong.
Can I just ask, Malcolm, is that private or development as, as well? Like, is it?
It's.
It, it's anything that, uh, local government would.
A repairian.
Would go through. No, it's to expedite development approvals, period, and specifically for, for affordable housing.
Okay.
Pauline, I will do my best to be there Wednesday, but I do have Avionics Tech coming early in the week. And I think he's here for two days, so I'm not sure if I can be there on Wednesday, but I will, like Wednesday day, but I will, I'll see.
Thanks. Councilor, Councilor Rich?
Yeah, through the chair, um, and not correcting you, Councilor McCabe. But I, I, I think, um, that was more for, um, affordable housing.
Yeah.
Um, not, not.
Harry and Eric.
Yeah, what we're speaking to now. But it does, I, I mean, there were, um, at the housing committee, uh, there were high level government there, so, and they spoke about getting stuff moving. So let's hope that that's all of these kind of things.
Okay, thank you. I, I, you know, I still feel like we should, I think if some regions are able to use a Q E P, some districts or municipalities use a Q E P for repairing an area and let their own, and trust the Q E P. Because I think what happened in the past is Q E Ps were just not doing their jobs properly. And that's when the government stepped in and decided that they couldn't trust the Q E P anymore. So I think if, we need to do some digging at, at regions that don't have to go through the process. Their Q E P does the, gives it the stamp and, and away they go, like Langley, like you. Like Langford or like, sorry, Langford. Um, so maybe we should have a conversation with them. So Gord, can we put that on your, to have a conversation? But I still think that we need to speak to this at SOGA. So, um, if Gord can't make it, who's going to be at SOGA on Wednesday? Are you going to be there, Bob?
Hmm.
Would you speak to it?
If, if I can, uh, sit down with one or two of you and come up with exactly what I'm going to say, yeah, I'd gladly do it. I just want to make sure I do it right.
Okay. So, go ahead, Councilor Bushel.
Yeah, let's do the chair, Ian, and I'll do some homework with, uh, Langford and Victoria and see how they are skirting the system or see what they're doing. Maybe we'll, uh, check with Scott and he might be able to help us out too.
Yep. Okay, all right. Um, any other, uh, resolutions that anyone wanted to discuss? Or I think we've got invasive species.
But you're doing that one.
I will have to, Bob might, if Bob's going to be there, Bob might have to. Resolutions. I will try.
I'll be, I'll be there.
Will you be there? Oh, you can speak to invasive species.
Yeah, with a little training.
Pam, you'll be there?
Yeah, I was gonna go. I didn't know we had to speak to all of them.
It all depends. Like, if there's a lineup of pro, you don't need to. But if there's no pro resolution and you got a lineup of cons, then, yeah, you get in the pro line about four times.
Oh, okay, then I guess we'd better be prepared.
Absolutely. I didn't realize that. So, okay, Council Rich?
Through the chair, it's just a question because I don't know a lot about invasive species. But I was coming back from Alberta this weekend. And there was actually, uh, when I crossed the border, there was a, a mandatory check stop um, by Golden and they actually had someone there flag boats, flagging boats in. Is that?
Regular.
And is that something we can look at?
Well, that is for us.
Oh, no, but I mean, just a man just.
Has six of those.
Okay.
So that's the only point of entrance into Sicamous, into, well, I guess.
From that direction.
Direction, but they usually have a dozen of those check stations, checkpoints. There's only six now. They've taken it, the government has taken it down because there's no funding. So our goal with this is to make sure that the government's giving us enough funding so that we can get those all opened up again.
Okay.
So that we're guarding our waters.
Hundred percent, yeah. I just, I saw it and I was like, oh, that's, that's what we're supposed to be doing.
And one of our resolutions that's going to F C M is, um, to make sure that, um, there's uh, bigger fines. If, and I always use this as an, as an example, if you, if you throw a potato chip bag out the window, it's a two thousand dollar fine for littering. So you go up and you pick up the potato chip bag, you throw it in the garbage and it's done. If you drop invasive species in our lake, there's no way to get rid of them. You can't eradicate them. So if you drive through the check stop or the, the boat check, um, stations, it's a three hundred and forty dollar fine to go cause disaster in a province. So at the fines, the, the crime doesn't fit the punishment, right? So, Council Evans?
Going to use that. That's good.
It's the truth though, right? It's two thousand dollars. Go ahead, Council Beach.
Chair? Oh, I don't even know. This is just something that popped up as you're talking about fines. And, uh, do they mark your boat or your vehicle to say that it's been? So theoretically, you could drive through a checkpoint, not get checked, and nobody would know that you weren't checked, correct? That's ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah, there's no, there's no system in place. There's, there's no system. So, while the government's, all right. So there, you know, I mean.
We're stood. Yeah.
Senator Lawrence.
Too. And you know what? Invasive species are educating people, like the, um, they're, they're at the boat ramps in the summer and they're making sure that people have cleaned, drained and dried. But, you know, it's paddle boards. It's.
Yeah.
It's a whole bunch of things.
Float planes.
Float planes, which they're not even on the, not even on the radar.
On the radar. And there's so many ways to, and places to put your boys in the water without anyone knowing.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and what was our third resolution?
Okay, so do we have clarity on who's talking about this one? So this is our last meeting before SOGA. So I just wanted to make sure we're clear on.
I, I would speak to the invasive, uh, muscle issue, but I would want it. I, like Bob, I'd like to get approached to all this so that I could be concise on what I'm, the points we want to.
Sure. Um, so, yes, and we can do that. And I will, I'll try to be there because I'm pretty lit about it and been around for a long time.
If you're there, you're a shoe in, but if you're not there, I, I would do.
But if you want, go to Don't Move a Muscle.
Yeah.
The site, watch the video.
Yeah.
Um, it's in Ontario.
Yeah.
And I mean, their fish, they're, you know.
Okay, so.
Fishing industry is, is slowing down because the fish can't get in the water anymore. Council Bushel?
And just the last one's, uh, TransCanada Highway Improvements, last resolution.
Right, what was that one?
Uh, I've got it up on the screen here. Province initiate probes.
The four-laning, oh, right, and it was endorsed, right?
Yeah.
So improving, and Malcolm, you can probably speak to this one.
Yeah, sure.
You know, we're looking for.
We watered it down. It's not generic to, uh, the four-lane footprint through Sicamous. It's just poor lady.
Prevention.
TransCanada.
Correct, we had to.
Right, okay, sure.
But still, I mean, let's.
The one thing I'd like to know is how much money is in place right now for that, that, if I could get staff to plan that out. If it's five hundred billion, that's not a lot.
Okay. Perfect, so we've got, uh, for the.
Eight hundred and thirty-seven million.
Yeah, in twenty twenty-one.
Who's how much?
Eight thirty-seven million, committed eight hundred and thirty-seven million over the next three years in twenty twenty-one.
So in a kicking horse, it takes a hundred million for one kilometer. So put that perspective.
How many kilometers is that?
One kilometer.
Well, I don't know how you're going to speak to it, but speak to it, Malcolm, and get the four lanes, okay?
Well, it's. It's four lane, basically the chase now. So we've got to go from chase to, uh, the Alberta border. So most of the money is going into, pay any, any, here, like in Salmon Arm and Sicamous. That's the worst stretch of TransCanada, uh, from, uh, to the Alberta borders, Salmon Arm to Sicamous. But it's most expensive because they picked all the, they've done all the cherry picking already. So all the hard parts are left.
Yeah.
They have.
Yeah, I know, that's true. But I mean, if, if we don't speak up to that, then.
Yes, sure.
Pushed on the push to the back burner continually.
There probably won't be anybody at the con now.
Probably not.
Those are people.
Probably not. No one's gonna disagree with you there. Okay. Anything else in resolutions? Is there any of these resolutions that you want to talk about that we want to support? Others other than ours? Um, was there?
Or not support. Or not. I had one that I didn't want to support.
Sorry, like something that could affect our community, like uh decriminalizing illicit drugs.
Well, yeah, um, that too.
I we missed that one somewhere. So let's, that's why we're gonna do our homework moving forward on.
Yeah, um. Yeah, no, I just, I didn't. Think that we should expediate the forest forest cutting, that's all. Just thinking about trees, tree hugger or anything, but. We can expediate forest forest re-cutting and that kind of stuff. I'm not sure we. Good, but that's just my personal opinion.
Okay, um, anything else, guys, on resolutions? Okay, we're good. Okay, let's move on. Um, B C Hydro Works uh across the Sicamous Channel. Kelly, you're gonna update us on that?
Yeah, so thank you through the chair. So I had a phone call the other day from a lovely fellow named David. Uh Cooper, who works with B C Hydro at B C Hydro is working with M O T I. Um, on the relocation of transmission lines as it relates to the Brun Bridge. Um, and they will be pulling pulls and cables across there as well as uh three conductors are being installed, and they are looking to. Uh, tentatively on July nineteenth, which is a Wednesday, to uh. Close traffic in the channel, so water traffic, not not the.
Live the nineteen.
Yes, sure. But this is the not all, so for up to six ten minute intervals. So, and it's only while they're moving these poles across the water. And so their plan is to communicate uh with the marina. And work with us to ensure that all the communication is occurring. Uh, he just wanted to bring it to my attention, to bring to your attention. So that A, we are aware, and I know July is in the middle of summer, but in order to continue the. The process, you know, and not hold it up. That's what they're recommending. So if if you want any comments or questions, like any concerns. I am going to phone David tomorrow and bring those to him. So I just wanted to inform everybody.
I I I personally don't think we should stop progress. So I mean, if that's a date, that's a date. However, if we're going to do that, I think. Very soon, we should be putting out like when they close Highway One, yeah, a few days warning. I think that we should do that, and we should make sure that it's well communicated so people can get through when they need to get through, and it's not causing, you know. Any grief, especially for Sicamous Houseboats, who has to get out onto the Shushwak and. Um, Blue Water has to get out onto the Shushwak. I mean, that's their business, right? So as long as they are well informed and they're at. And our social media is up to date and. We're sharing the story. Yeah, go ahead, Counsel Rich.
Through the chair, and maybe we can ask them that they can start it at daybreak um. So that uh, you know, like they pave at night uh through Armstrong, so we don't um have as many things, but if if they start when the light happens. Uh, there's not that many people moving between six and nine o'clock. So if it's ten minute increments, which takes an hour, if there's six of them. Gives them three hours to get it done before things kind of, people start waking up in town. I don't know if that's possible.
That's a really good idea. It's a good idea, yeah.
But we can ask.
Question. Yep. Anyone else? Go ahead, Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, just out.
Kelly, when you're talking to David, so this is the bridge, this is what holding up the tender. So uh. If you're talking to him, if you can get a schedule of when when he'll be, when the work will be complete, because that'll be our window to start. I mean, M O T I, you know, are you, is your tenure ready for whatever date the date gets you sort of thing? That's what M O T I said. It's a critical path right now. So we have to support this in any way we can in order to move that tendering process for Brun Bridge.
Okay, so what I just. Nope. So what I'm hearing is make sure we're on top of this communication. Yeah, no, Ian isn't on here anymore.
Okay.
Noticed he left.
Okay.
Um, communication is critical. Make sure we communicate with all the marinas and the houseboat companies, which they have already made a commitment to do, but wanted. To inform us first. Uh, the date is July nineteenth, which is a Wednesday, and to try to minimize the interruption. Like, try to do morning window, see what they can do in terms of that, and to also follow up to see if I can get some information about their schedule and when they plan on being done.
They have already done some of their homework, because none of the houseboat companies, Blue Water, uh, Sicamous Houseboats, or uh T A. Sail on Wednesdays.
Hmm.
So those are switch days, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're, yes.
So that's good.
And I appreciate there is a lot of time. It's only April right now. This is July. You know, and they're trying to minimize the length of time and number of times, recognizing it is a highly used.
Busy busy time. Yeah, okay. Any other comments, questions on that? Okay, let's go to our uh council reports. Counselor Evans.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, I would just like to mention that it was really great to uh. Go to the open house um of our daycare, some new management, and it was great to talk to uh Amar and Kiran and uh. They're doing a great job and to talk to Crystal and Sam, who are running the place, and it's wonderful to see that it's full and. Firing on all cylinders and uh moving ahead with new initiatives that will be exciting as the time comes. And it was great to go to the strategy session with all of you, and um Kelly did a great job organizing it with Sarah and. Everybody and to sit down with you guys and uh brainstorm. Good, good for the team.
Awesome. Thank you. Counsel Rich.
Uh, well, I'd like, I wasn't here, but uh thank um everyone on staff that put the Easter egg hunt together, because wow, what a turnout. And uh, community, people I've spoke to just had a fabulous time. So uh kudos to the staff for putting that together. That was amazing. Um, strategic planning was overwhelming and fabulous and learned a lot, and off we go. And um, Counsel McCabe and I were at the housing meeting in Vancouver, and again, just a ton of information, but we brought a lot back. And uh, very positive, some uh great contacts and just incredible information. It was great.
Excellent. Thanks, Counsel Rich.
Counsel Bush.
Yeah, through the chair. Um, yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody, also all staff for the Easter egg hunt. I couldn't make it that day. I was in cameras, but uh here it was really, went over really well. And uh, just thank Jamie and her team for putting that together. Uh, yeah, I attended the Planning and Development Committee meeting. Um, that went really well last Wednesday. Uh, daycare, I was at the daycare, uh, I think I was there at about two or something. I can't remember what time, but yeah, it was uh very interesting. Still lots of people running around and having uh brunch and yeah, um, what a great team they have there. And I think it's gonna go really well for them. Uh, strategic planning session we had. I appreciate everybody's uh input, and that went really well. Also, nice to have staff there this time. And uh, hear some of their comments and help us out with our direction. So that went really well. Um, I'll head bike park. I went for a ride last night or uh up the mountain uh with Corbin himself, and we uh, you know, I was kind of. He's been away for a little while, and he's been on Tasmania and New Zealand doing mountain biking and uh, of course, trying all these special parks out around the world. And I was a little concerned taking him up there last night, because he was um, he hasn't seen it in a while, and they've done a lot of work up there. And a lot of logging, so all the trails that they actually had uh him and Wes had actually picked and. And uh GPSed and rooted. Uh, of course, are all completely clear cutted now, and I was really worried that he was gonna be upset, and. He said half the funding's done. He said, he said, this is unbelievable. He said, he's never seen anything like it. He said, it's perfect, and uh all those little trails are now really exposed. And uh, and then he sent me a video, just he was, he was in uh this weekend in uh, well, he's working in Revelstoke right now, doing some uh machine work there. And all the Revelstoke people are now starting to come over here and uh and use the area, because if there's still three feet of snow there in the bush. So he said, it's, he said, they're just, you know, they're getting out and they're using, he's got a couple of special trails uh around here that he's already been using. So it was kind of neat to see them on the uh out this on the weekend, and he sent me a little video. So that was kind of cool. So he's really pumped and stoked about getting this bike trail going, and he wants to be a part of it if he can. So and uh, other than that, I just want to remind everybody, April twenty ninth, we have the Communities in Blue manual city or town cleanup. So we'll be uh meeting at the senior center to help them with their flower beds and. And uh planting there, and we'll also be uh when Deb's in town, we're gonna, we're gonna quickly run around town and pick out some priorities of what has to be done and. And like normally, we do two mile and uh do the whole area and do the clean up the ditches and everything, and every year it gets less and less garbage. So uh, yeah, we're we're. Uh, we're, we're doing well. It's, the ditches are looking good, and we'll work with the staff and make sure we're all ready for April twenty ninth. That's about all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Bush. Before we, can I just ask a quick question? Have you talked to the folks over at Husky to see if they could do a a. A quick cleanup around their area prior to um.
I will talk to John about that. Um, no luck with.
Daryl, can you put that on your radar, maybe to talk to John too, but I. You know what? I mean, we do a really good job, or Deb does, and you guys do, of organizing cleanup for a community. But that's based back there. It's disgusting, and for a business owner to allow that in his, on his property. Uh, needs to be addressed again, I think, and yeah, perhaps. Some penalties or something put in place. Go ahead, Counsel Bush.
You know, I just thought of this. We used to write Husky years ago. We used to write Husky. And uh, never got anywhere, because it, um, but maybe if we wrote Esso, because Esso's now running it. And uh, I wonder if we could write corporate head office uh Esso and see if we could um shake some.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Daryl.
I'm I'm not sure you'd have any more luck going through corporate Esso than Husky. Uh, the luck we've had or success we've had with Husky here. Is just a face to face saying, if you don't clean it up, we will, and we're expensive, and and then it gets cleaned up. So we'll, we'll jump on that right away.
Great.
You know, in hindsight, there should have been a resolution that every gas station is responsible for the cleanliness of of their property, and there should have been fines. A bylaw implemented. Absolutely. Maybe that's something that we need to think about now that we're having this conversation, because it's, anyway, Counsel McCabe.
If you're reporting, so that's uh our materials, that's M O T I, and so the Brun Bridge maintenance contract, but. And a lot of what we tell them, because it's not our authority or whatever works.
Yeah, through the chair, they clear snow all winter long, whatever's on the ground, and there's lots of bottles and stuff, they get pushed into the ditches. Aim will. They haven't been responding either. It's, it's just litter that's brought on by them, so.
But brought on by someone that lands on someone's property that gets pushed into the ditch.
So I also attended the strategic planning retreat, and now it's very good, and I'm pretty impressed that the staff has got that into a two page document. Well done. Uh, Counsel Rich and I attended a housing summit. I've got some rough notes on Ben's studies, notes emailed to staff and council. Um, I stopped in at the Easter egg hunt just when the kids were gonna do the dash across the. Across the baseball diamond or the fields to get their ace, pretty ambitious little gappers. Uh, and Jamie and staff did an excellent job of uh, I think it was a hundred and forty seven kids they had or something like that, so. Good turnout. And I attended the uh the open house for the daycare, just time, just in time for lunch. And uh, everything turned out. I was there around twelve, twelve thirty or so. And uh, yeah, pretty excited about how that is evolving into a full fledged. Daycare center, and that's pretty exciting for our community. So. It's, we're getting there with the daycare license daycare, or way ahead of, you know, it's been taking ten years, but we're getting closer all the time. This is pretty exciting for the daycare.
Awesome. Thank you. Counsel McCabe, Counsel Beach.
I found my buttons. Sorry.
Bring it closer. There we go. There we go. Thank you.
All right, um, so yeah, I attended uh interagency um, the last interagency meeting on the twenty. First, I guess, of March, uh strategic planning session um was great, uh great. With the whole team and just thank you, Kelly and everybody for just making it such a pleasure to actually plan together. Um, and I attended a health implementation meeting on April sixth, and I was one of the Easter bunnies that helped.
Oh, look at you go.
But I missed one afterwards, because I had other things that I had to be at. So anyways, thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Um, is Counsel Bailey for sure gone?
Yeah, he's no longer on here.
I just want to comment on the strategic planning session as well. I think that uh, I I this council is, I. Amaze, because everyone is so diverse and so different, but yet so respectful. Um, everyone's sharing their ideas openly. So you know what? It's, it's, it's a winning council, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it. Um, and Kelly, thank you and Sarah so much for doing a great job. Uh, that was very well organized. It kept us on task. Kept it going and obviously collected all the information that uh is is our strategic priorities, our values going forward. Uh, I attended the finance committee meeting uh yesterday where I stole the chair from Gord. Until it was pointed out that I was a thief, so then I had to give up the chair and uh Gord chaired the finance, uh select finance committee and did a great job. Uh, Bianca, thank you so much. Your presentation was amazing. You did a great job. Thank you, Kelly. Um. I think that, I think it's a budget that we can all be happy with, and I think the residents of Sicamous are gonna be pretty happy as well. So. Can't share anything until it's passed, but it's um, it's, it was, it's well done, very well done. Um. So tomorrow I have a meeting with um a hotelier that is. Given us time to talk about uh Lakeside Hotel here in on Maris. So fingers crossed, uh it's pretty exciting. So. No promises, but you know what? We're talking to someone, so that that in itself is exciting. So. The B C uh Hotel Association, Ingrid, um sent this as, sent this gentleman as a referral, so that's uh exciting steps for us. Uh, next week, I've got municipal uh directors meeting and a C S R D board meeting as well on uh Wednesday and Thursday. Other than that, um, that's it for for me. Now, if anyone in the gallery has any questions they'd like to ask, now is the time. Go ahead, Brian.
I just like, thank you all for. Notes. Calls after my race pass. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Brian. We, our thoughts are with you. Um, so uh, any, anyone else have their hand up there? No. Okay, we're gonna adjourn. Recommendation of the committee of the whole meeting for April twelve, twenty twenty three be adjourned at three ten. Could I have a mover? Counsel Rich, second, Counsel Beach, all in favor? Adjourned. Thank you, everyone.